Planning Commission meeting, uh, it's in session for July twenty seventh. And we'll start with a roll call.
Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Rancic. Uh, Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lear is absent.
All right. Well, the next item on the agenda will be for public comments and what we do on the public comment sections for items that are not on the agendas. Sometimes people like to give us an update on things that are going on in their neighborhood. Or, uh, is tell us about something that might be on our agenda in the future. So we go ahead and, uh, open up the public comment section for items not on the agenda. If I don't see anybody waving their hand or jumping up and down in the room. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item number two. Uh, uh, and then we need, we need to have, and then we'll go for the approval of minutes on two different meetings we had. On June twenty third, twenty second was the regular planning commission meeting. Um, and I didn't see anything there that needed to be modified. Um, no, I'll, I'll move, uh, for the adoption of the June twenty two.
I'll second it.
We've been seconded, uh, roll call please. And we do a roll call because of people on the phone. Normally we just say all on papers A, but because the phone, uh, the zoom, we'll just go ahead and list it off.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Rancic.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lear is absent.
All right. With that, then we have the second meeting. It was a Zoom meeting, uh, that was concerning the, uh, the housing plan. And, uh, that was, that was a long one on Zoom and, and, uh, for those that you attended, I'm sorry it went so long, but I wanted to make sure everyone felt like they were included. So, uh, anything on that, uh, that needs to be updated?
Not by me. I'm happy to move that we accept it.
All right, move. There's a motion, uh, second, move and seconded, uh, roll call please.
Yes, and I will, uh, try to get everyone's pronunciation correct this time. Uh, Chair Lane.
Uh, that was a hard one. Yes.
Commissioner Rancic, yes. Uh, Commissioner Conse.
Yes.
Commissioner Liam.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And Ralph, I want to show you that, uh, you've done an excellent job on all the me- meeting minutes. I, I haven't found anything that need to be updated. Uh, on a meeting after meeting after meeting. So thank you very much for your attentiveness and your thoroughness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did it.
And that. And then, uh, so the next item is item number four, public hearings. I just go quickly over, uh, the format that we use. And then I'll repeat it as other people show up for the meeting for their other items if I need to. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. What we do is we start with a overview from, uh, from staff. And then we have questions from the commission to staff, uh, uh, on, on the item. And then we open up the public hearing and we start the public hearing with the applicant or their representative. And then we open up around any, anyone else who wants to speak on the item. And then we close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, uh, for discussion and actions appropriate. We'll do that on every item. And if anybody shows up, like I said, I'll repeat this so that they're on the same page. With that, item four A is a heritage tree removal permit for the tree protection zone exception and a tree protection zone protection for fifty tall wood court. In Atherton and we'll start with the staff overview. Ralph, you've got this one, right?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Lane. So our subject site at fifty tallwood court is a forty six thousand seven hundred ninety square foot, uh, just over one acre lot located in the R one eight zoning district. It's bounded on all sides by other low density, single family homes. Site is currently developed with an existing two story main residence, a detached garage and a pool. Now, the applicant, give me one moment to pull up our site plan here. Now, as you can see here, the applicants proposing construct a new eight thousand four hundred eighty-four square foot. Two-story residence with the basement, attached garage and J A D U. They're also proposing construct a new detached A D U covered patio and pool. Now to accommodate this new construction, the applicant is requesting, uh, two items this evening, the first being a heritage tree removal. For one seventeen and a half inch heritage liquid amber tree. That's tree number twenty-eight on the plans. The applicant is also requesting tree protection zone exceptions for seven heritage trees as follows. Those are tree number nine, a coastal thirty-five inch coastal redwood to six point two times the tree's diameter. Tree number ten, a thirty-two and a half inch coastal redwood to seven point nine times the tree's diameter. Tree number fourteen, a twenty-two and a half inch coast live oak to six point seven three times the tree's diameter. Tree number fifteen, a thirty-inch valley oak to seven point eight times the tree's diameter. Tree number sixteen, an eighteen-inch coast live oak to seven point eight four times the tree's diameter. Tree number thirty, a thirty-seven and a half inch coastal redwood to six times the tree's diameter. And finally, tree number thirty-two, a twenty-one and a half inch Chinese elm to six times the tree's diameter away. Now here we can see the location of the liquid amber that's proposed for removal, uh, relative to the existing residents as well as trees number thirty and number thirty-two. And then our view here, this gives a little better look at the proposed extent of the new residents. So trees number thirty and number thirty-two proposed to six times to accommodate this, uh, additional scope to the northeast corner of the residence, uh, in the drive paved driveway area. The five remaining TPZ exceptions are to accommodate, uh, construction on the west rear portion of the residence and pool area, as we can see here. Now, the applicant originally applied for the removal of trees number thirty and thirty-two. Those would be the thirty-seven and a half inch coastal redwood and twenty-one and a half inch Chinese elm. At the front of the property, um, with their initial submission. At that time, staff could not support the tree removals because of the condition of the trees. And also because of the possibility of keeping the trees in place with TPZ exceptions. Uh, so to accommodate keeping those trees in place, the applicant revised a proposed four car garage to a three car garage. Uh, the applicant also made changes to the exterior, proposed exterior of the house to condense this from the original proposal. Provide sufficient TPZ areas for the other exceptions at the direction of town staff. The applicants have provided a written basis of this request for both the H T R and TPZ exceptions. That's provided in attachment four of the staff report. That a letter notes their intention to concentrate the development on the property away from a grow of heritage redwoods located along the rear of the property. They also note there are many trees on the property overall, and there's a gray change in the rear yard that constrain where buildings can be located. Now, the tree removal and TPZ exception requests are subject to planning commission review. Further requirements of chapter eight point one zero of the Atherton municipal code. The town arborist has reviewed the application for the heritage removal and provided a supplemental memo that's included as attachment three in the staff report. The town arborist supports the removal of tree number eight, number twenty-eight, the liquid amber, because it has dieback in the canopy and was topped in the past. However, the town arborist also notes that more detail is needed on the proposed replanting plan. Now, the replanting plan does not mention the size of the new proposed tree. And she also notes that discretion of the planning commission, the permitting may be required to plant. Either three trees of fifteen gallon container size, two trees of twenty-four inch box container size. Or one tree of fifteen gallon container size and one tree of thirty-six inch container size. The town arborist's recommendation is that the proposed new valley oak be of a thirty-six inch box size. The planning commission may also attach other conditions to ensure the replanting plan is adequate. Now regarding the TPZ exceptions. The town arborist memo notes that trees thirty-two, thirty, sixteen, fourteen, nine and ten, so those are all the tree exceptions. Except for tree fifteen, the valley oak. Uh, have good tolerance to construction impacts. As for that valley oak, it has moderate tolerance, but with a TPZ request of seven point eight times the tree's diameter. The protection area should be sufficient to protect the tree and its roots from construction impacts. Now, the town arborist memo also provides the following mitigations to be followed. Those are also included in the draft TPZ exception certificate. Uh, that is included with the staff report. First, that a certified arborist be on site when the cut into the grade takes place in the back of the property for the retaining wall and pool. Second, that no roots over two inches be cut. Third, that the trees be protected with metal fencing. And fourth, that the cut can be no further than the above exceptions requested. So due to the requested TPZ distances and the condition and construction tolerance of the trees. The town arborist finds the H, excuse me, the tree removal and TPZ exception requests. Uh, to be, uh, excuse me, are approved of both of them based on the following criteria, the heritage tree guidelines. First, section two point two B to B, that the species are tolerant of construction based on species, health, size and age. Uh, from B, section two point two B five B, at the probability of failure. A function of heritage tree inside conditions such as not limited to structural defects, presence of Z species, history, age, or remaining lifespan and varying weather conditions. And lastly, section two point two B five D, that the number of species size, location of existing trees in the area. And the effect of the requested removal upon shade, noise buffers, protection from wind damage, air pollution, historic value, scenic beauty, health, safety. And general welfare of the area and towns as a whole. The staff's opinion that the removal of the heritage tree, uh, the liquid amber number twenty-eight would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan in the zoning ordinance. Based on the factors and combined with the replanting plan in accordance with chapter eight point one zero. And secondly, it's the town's opinion that the TPZ exception requests. Uh, found to have designated protection area sufficiently large enough to protect both the trees and the roots from disturbance and or damage. Combined with related mitigation as supported by the town arborist. Staff is therefore recommending approval of both the heritage removal and TPZ exception requests. Um, and of course, the, the commission has the discretion to modify or deny either request. Now notice, as this application was mailed, the property owns in five hundred feet of the subject property. Uh, no public comments have been received to date. I believe we have the applicants on the line and I yield my time back to the chair.
All right, very good. And I, and I just tried to zoom in, so you need to let me in. All right, uh, I, I've got a question. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Very good and very thorough once again. So there'll be two, two aspects of this. One is the, to confirm that there's no environmental impact and then also for the motion of the item itself. Any questions of staff?
No.
All right, very good. Then I'll go ahead and open up the public, uh, comment section and, uh, and go ahead and, uh, we'll hear from the applicant first or the representative.
Yes, I believe that's, uh, Henry. So Henry, if you're there, if you could, uh.
Henry, are you on mute?
Hi, yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hi, yeah, I'm, um, my name's Henry. I'm work with the, the architecture office. Um, I think. That that was pretty summed up pretty well. I don't have anything else to add. Um. Our landscape architect is on as well. I don't know, Chris, if you want to mention anything else. But, um. Yeah, it seems comprehensive to me.
Hi, yeah, I, it seemed pretty comprehensive. I think that covered all the issues. I had, I had a hard time hearing a portion of it, because we have some ambient noise going on in our office, but. I think for the most part that covered it. Were there any questions, open questions, Sally, that you had for us?
I don't have any.
Let's, let's, let's close, let's close the public hearing section before we, we go on. Well, yeah. We just want to make sure you get a chance to say whatever you want, then, then we'll see if anyone else wants to speak on the item and then we'll bring it back to staff. All right. Um, was that it for the applicant? For the item? Okay, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this item. Uh, other than the applicant. I don't see anybody raising their hand or, uh.
The only.
There is a hand. I see a hand. All right, go ahead. I can't see you.
Yeah. Okay, I'm outraged by this proposal. Uh, it, we have a set of ordinances to protect heritage trees.
Can we get a name? Can we at least understand who's talking?
Yeah. Can you go ahead and, uh, in- introduce yourself and indicate where you're from?
Sure. My name is Carolyn Beverstock. I have lived on Walsh Road. Um, since I was eighteen months old, I'm now seventy-three. Um, I live, uh, very close to this proposed, um, desecration of the trees. And I'm horrified. We've, we've got, uh, uh, town guidelines. For what a heritage tree is and, um, and to, uh, retain heritage trees. And to, to simply allow people who want to make another McMansion. Uh, just. Well, I can't, I don't really want to use the words that I really am thinking about this. But from my point of view. As a resident of all these years. It, um, I'm watching, uh, the horror. Of construction after construction after construction project. That, um, take out, um, fine, um, parts of our, our or urban forest. And to have that be the situation over and over and over again, I protest.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
I actually, this is Randy. I actually have a question. I just want to check.
Let me, let me close.
A minute.
You, you're close, a question of the, of the speaker?
Uh, no, my question is for the architect. So if, if I, that's really more that I just wanted to make sure about public outreach. We just heard it. From this, from this, uh, person. I'm just curious if any other neighbors had gotten outreach and if, if there's been any other similar responses.
Uh, no, we haven't had any other, um, contacts.
Did you do the outreach?
Did you do the outreach is my question?
Uh, we have, I do not believe so, Chris. Did we do any? I, we're requesting just to remove one tree. So.
Yeah.
One tree? It's much more than one.
All right, let's go. Let's, uh, we, we're going to keep it, uh, in, in order with the commission. So, uh, I'm, is any, is anyone else here to speak on the item? Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate. Hey Sally, can you give us an update on some of your opinion on this, uh, before we go forward?
Yeah, so the applicant applied to planning commission for three trees for removal. So for tree removals, they wanted to remove three trees. I denied two of the trees. And so that's why they're here today, um, at the planning commission for the third tree. The rest of the ones that are on the staff report are for tree protection zone exceptions. Which are basically how far you can build away from a tree. And again, the applicant worked with the town to either lengthen the distance or, uh, some of them, they didn't need an exception. Um, the reason why I'm recommending the exceptions is because I feel like this is. More of a unique lot because of all the different grade changes. So it makes the, of flat buildable area smaller. And so, so in front of you is only one tree for removal.
And what's the story on that one tree, in your opinion?
Um, it's a liquid amber and it's been kind of, uh, pushed together with three other trees and the redwoods. So it's not in the best shape and that's why I can recommend it.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, this is Randy. So I just want to follow up. One, you guys know every, when it's not mentioned, my big thing every, every time is, did you talk to your neighbors? Did you talk to your neighbors, et cetera? Um, secondly, I don't have a problem. I'm happy to make a motion on this depending on how everybody else feels. I, I, there's one tree. If Sally's supportive and has already gotten the other two. Saved per se, I don't have a problem with this, nor do I have a problem with the, the, uh, the lower, uh, number relative to the, uh, TPZ.
Anyone else?
All right. Uh, I, I'll, I'll just, uh, say that I like to thank, uh, Ms. Beverstock for making her comments. It's important that people make their opinions known. Thank you.
Yeah, well, and, and I'll, I'll piggyback on both of those comments. I went to the site. I looked at it. It's covered with trees for one thing. Uh, and, and, uh, so I'm glad Sally that you were in, in on making sure the two were, were not chosen to, to be on this list. And, uh, um, and, and the, the one tree that is on the list is next to other trees that are, you know, are pinching on it. So it's one of those situations where it's an overplanted site anyway. And this one tree is not as important as making sure the redwoods and other trees around it are healthy. Plus the, uh, the, uh, the additional plan for other, uh, other planting is such that it's, it makes sense to me. But I appreciate the fact that we're getting, you know, uh, uh, getting support for the fact that we are protecting a lot of trees and all these, uh, these things that come forward. Uh, and. Gabby, do you have anything on this one?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay.
Happy, happy to make the motion if you want.
Go ahead. Uh, first, there's two motions. There's one, okay, go.
I'll make up, make them each at one at a time. Uh, on motion one, I move the planning commission find a proposed removal of one seventeen and a half inch. Heritage liquid amber tree, tree number twenty-eight at fifty-eight tallwood court. Would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. That the commission approve the tree removal subject to the conditions listed in the draft heritage tree removal permit.
I'll second that one. Uh, roll call please.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Rancic?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Conse?
Yes.
All right, number two, the final motion.
Happy to make number two, if you guys are okay with it.
Go ahead.
I'll move that the planning commission find the exception to the tree, uh, protection zone TPZ for seven heritage trees. One thirty-five inch coastal redwood, tree number nine to six point two times the tree's diameter. One thirty-two and a half inch coastal redwood. Tree number ten to seven point nine times, one twenty-two and a half inch coastal, coast live oak, tree number fourteen to six point seven three times, seven three times. One thirty-inch valley oak, tree number fifteen to seven point eight times. One eighteen-inch coast live oak, tree number sixteen to seven point eight four times. One twenty-one and a half inch Chinese elm, tree thirty-two. To six times and one thirty-seven and a half inch coastal redwood, tree number thirty. To six times to allow for construction of a new residence at fifty tallwood court. Would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And that the commission approved the TPZ exceptions subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception permit.
Perfect. Uh, I'll, you, you got a second on that?
Second.
Harry seconds, all right. Roll call please.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Rancic?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Conse?
Yes.
All right, the next item is item four B, tree protection zone, uh, TPZ exception for seventy-eight Alejandra Avenue in Atherton. And we'll start with the same procedure with the, uh, staff overview.
Thank you, Chair Lane. Uh, slightly more straightforward one for you here, thankfully. So our subject site is seventy Alejandra Ave is a one acre interior lot. Uh, located in the R one eight zoning district and it's bounded by other low density, single family homes. The property contains an existing main residence, detached garage and swimming pool. The applicants have proposed plans that include the conversion of a portion of the existing detached garage. Uh, excuse me, yes, detached garage to an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, in associated addition to the garage to be located in front of the existing building. Let me pull up the plans here. For you all. So here we see where it says new A D U outlined in red. That is the existing garage. And we have this new proposed detached garage in front of this structure. Now, the applicants were requesting a planning commission TPZ exception for a twenty-seven point two inch heritage coast live oak, tree number thirty-one, which you can see here. Its trunk is situated on the adjacent neighboring property, uh, but its canopy and TPZ extends into the subject site. Now, the applicant previously received a staff level TPZ exception for eight times the tree's diameter for the same tree. But since that approval, that was determined the garage, uh, excuse me, to accommodate additional storage area inside the garage. The applicant proposed a slight extension to the garage towards the front, uh, which we can see here highlighted in that. Red shaded area and then the intrusion highlighted in green. Uh, now, the applicants note that the, given the approved width of the garage. It's bound in the east-west direction by the required ten-foot side yard setback to the east and required eight-foot setback to the west between the existing main house and the proposed new building. The garage could only be extended in length to the south in order to accommodate the needed storage space. The proposed extension is slightly over two feet in length, as we can see here. Now, tree number thirty-one is noted, noted to have fair vigor, fair form, is suppressed, leans into the property. And is co-dominant at grade with a poor union formation observed, uh, this supported, per the arborist report submitted by the applicant. The tree is recommended to be pruned using acceptable crown reduction cuts. And it's recommended that a cable is installed to offer extra support to the co-dominant union at grade. The project arborist also notes that because the encroachment is for this one corner of the garage, there's a small percentage of the tree's root zone that will be impacted. One point, we, one point one three percent. They also note that this percentage is likely lower due to the existing driveway area that is likely discourage root growth and, uh, previously through compaction. They further opine that in the impacts to the tree expected to be non-existent due to the construction type and mitigation recommendations included in the arborist report. Uh, including such things as requiring the foundation excavation to be inspected and documented by the project arborist. That hand excavation will occur that any roots encountered measuring two inches in diameter or larger was first to be shown to the product arborist between, before being cleanly cut using a handsaw or loppers. And minor irrigation under the project arborist direction. The scope of the requested TP exception less than eight times requires consideration by the planning commission in accordance with the town's heritage tree guidelines and standards. The town arborist has reviewed the project arborist reports and site plan diagrams. Um, and prepared a memorandum that's included as attachment two of the staff report. She notes the proposed seven point five times TPZ results in a seventeen foot distance from tree number thirty-one. It would be encroaching thirteen inches into the eight X TPZ. She also notes that the applicant is proposing hand excavation take place, uh, within that area to create minimal disturbance to the root structure. And that coastal live oaks have good tolerance to construction impacts. Because of this minimal encroachment and because of the proposed hand excavation, she finds the request to meet the following criteria. Of the heritage tree standards, and that is that the probability of failure. Just a function of heritage tree and site conditions such as not limited to structural defects, presence of Z's, species histories, age, or remaining lifespan and varying weather conditions. As such, the town arborist is recommending approval of the requested exception at the proposed seven point five times distance with the recommended conditions. Um, provided the minimal amount of encroachment and the physical conditions of tree number thirty-one. Uh, of course, the planning commission has the option of either denying or amending that request. Notice his application was mailed to our proper, property owners within five hundred feet. Today, no public comments have been received on the item. I know we have our applicants in person here in the chambers and I yield my time back to you.
All right. All right. This doesn't happen very often these days. Thank you. You got. The discount, the, the tickets were discounted for you because of the, all right. Thank you very much, Ralph. Uh, Sally, do you want to make a comment on this one before we go public, a comment, just to make sure we had, uh, your, get your thoughts on this?
Um, yeah, I just felt like, um, it's only thirteen inches that it encroaches less than the, what I could. Approve at staff level. I don't think that's going to affect the tree very much. Um, I do look closely how, at how things affect the neighbor's trees, but I, I felt this one wouldn't have any effects.
All right. Is there any plan to fertilize that tree? D, uh, deep group fertilization? I know when we have our trees, uh, cut, they do that and that makes a big difference. So they come, the, the, the trees. Robustness right after we do that. Is there any, uh, plan to do that?
Um, I don't think, I haven't talked to the neighbor, so I'm not sure if they plan on doing that.
Well, if, if it's going to be a cut on the tree, that's what I'm talking about. So, uh, it's a, it really makes a difference on the oaks around our, our area or, or the trees around our area of all different types. All right. Anything else, Sally?
Um, that, that's it.
Any other commissioners have a comment before we go?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and this is your moment. So, don't rush to the, don't, don't rush to the, you guys are on straws back there. What's the story?
We didn't get to see him. I guess not if we're online, huh?
Uh, you can probably see the back of her head.
Oh, there we go. Oh, there we go.
There you go. Ralph's on the case.
All right.
Go ahead and introduce yourself and.
I, I'm Chris Haas, the architect representing Kenny and Julie who are behind me and the four young girls who are living at seventy-eight of. Um.
Did you say four?
Four, they have four.
Four.
Yeah, so they're, they've, uh. One nest there, so, uh.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it was a great, um, summary of what we're interested in doing there. It is only thirteen inches and the, the tree's quite precious to them. I mean, this is going to be providing shade for their. The driveway where the kids are playing, um, you know, it's privacy between the neighboring home. So, um, as we mentioned, we're going to, you know, kind of hand shovel that area. We're, we're, it's in our interest, the owner's interest to, um, protect the tree as best as possible. So, um, you know, we're, we're looking to. Take anything that's necessary for the preservation of that tree.
All right.
Um, it, it just so happens that, uh, as was mentioned, we're kind of pinned in between the breezeway of the house and having to, and, and to, to, to bring the, the new garage forward, which will sit on the existing driveway. And we're just kind of pinned in between that, that, uh, tree protection zone. And the house in that breezeway and we just need thirteen more inches to really make like a, a usable garage space. And that's, that's kind of the bottom line. So, so hopefully. To really make like a, a usable garage space and that's, that's kind of the bottom line, so, so hopefully, um. Everyone is, uh, is amenable to that and like I said, we're very interested in protecting that tree, so. Uh, you know, in the interest of, of the property and property owners, so.
All right, any questions?
No.
All right, good. You two guys want to get your money's worth? Go ahead, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Uh, Kenny Tucker, um, with my wife Julie, we bought the home here recently. Um, and I would just echo what Chris said, we've told him and our contractor, you know, it is an important treat to us, obviously, for protection. Uh, for the neighbor across the way who, who we've also spoken with and it's important to them and and they, you know, are understanding, so.
All right, good. You may want, yeah, on your side, you can fertilize from there too, so just if you coordinate with them, you'll get the right thing and those. It really does boost the growth of the tree right afterwards, I found in my own personal situation, so just be aware of that. Makes a big difference. All right, thank you. Any, any questions?
Nope.
All right, good, then, uh, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion action, anything on this? I, I went out to the site, it's a really, I love the fact that it's, it's not being torn down. I love that, but because anything, anything older than, uh, than fifteen years, I, I just basically think it's going to get a, get flattened, so, uh. Appreciate the fact that you're preserving it. Um, any, any other, uh, comments?
Not for me.
Make a motion. All right, go ahead, very, thank you, motion.
Okay, I moved that the planning commission find the exception to the tree protection zone for one live, one coast live oak tree, tree number thirty-one. Seven one-half times the tree's diameter to allow for the construction of a new detached garage. Addition at seventy-eight Alejandra Avenue would not be contrary to the, to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons. Outlined in the staff report and that the commission approved the TPZ exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exceptions.
All right, great.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, I'll just say one thing, make sure that no heavy trucks, uh, driving your driveway during the construction because that'll be damaging to the roots potentially too. So just be aware of that. All right, uh, then Gabby, anything on this? Are you, are you ready for?
Um, no, I totally agree, yep.
All right, very good.
Being careful.
Roll call, roll call.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Neronsek?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Conse?
Yes.
All right, rolling right along, item four C, thank you for showing up, all right, you have a, have a good time. Now you thought this was the hard part, watch. Yeah, I have two daughters and they didn't affect me a bit, don't. A special, uh, this is a special structure permit for seventy-three Maple Avenue and we'll go ahead and start with the, uh, staff report.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Yes.
So the subject site, uh, is located on interior elongated, uh, meaning a depth over two times the width lot at seventy-three Maple Ave. This is within the R one B zoning district and it's bounded by other single family residences. The site contains an existing one-story residence with a detached garage. Now, as you'll see from the site plan here. So here we see that existing residence, uh, with the area proposed addition at the back, which we'll cover in just a moment here. The existing house is, has a legal non-conforming left side yard setback of eighteen feet nine inches. Otherwise, twenty feet would be the standard minimum setback required here. Now, a portion of the proposed first floor, uh, is proposed to have an addition totaling five hundred fifty-seven square feet. Uh, with additional two hundred fifty-nine square foot habitable attic space over that portion of the new addition of the property. The new addition proposes to continue the legal non-conforming left side yard setback of eighteen feet nine inches towards the rear of the lot. All other portions of this proposed addition beat and or will exceed the otherwise standard setbacks. And here's a close review of the new portion, uh, highlighted in blue with the existing legal non-conforming residents in orange. Now, per, uh, AMC, any request for addition to a legal non-conforming main building in the R one B zoning district. Uh, is permitted with issuance of a special structures permit. Now, it's noted that a row of existing trees and shrubs on both the subject property and the adjacent neighbor's property. Combined with the existing six-foot tall fence will assist in screening this area, encroaching into the required standard side yard setback. Future plans will additionally be subject to applicable requirements of the town's landscape screening ordinance. The town, uh, the application was reviewed by the town arborist and was determined not to have any impacts to existing heritage trees. Now, in order to grant the special structures permit, uh, the commission will need to make the findings such that the setback would be appropriate under the general plan of the town. Consider any unique conditions of the property such as trees, shrubs, screening. And the effect of the proposed construction on neighboring properties, both as to privacy and view. And the impact, if any, of the proposed construction on the rural character of the neighborhood. It is staff's opinion that this proposed project is consistent with the general plan and will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Location of the proposed improvements does not extend beyond the setback lines already established by the main residents. Combined with the existing plus any required landscape screening, this will not be detrimental to the public health and safety. No heritage trees will be removed or impacted as part of this proposal. Uh, so the planning commission could also modify or deny the request for the special structures permit. Today, uh, we've not received any public comment regarding this proposal. The applicant conducted their own public outreach to adjacent neighbors at sixty-five and eighty-one Maple Ave. Uh, and noted these neighbors were supportive of their application and I believe those, uh, seventy-three Maple, the applicant is on the line here. And now I will leave my time back to you, Chair Lane.
Very good, any questions to staff?
No.
No.
All right, good, uh, then we'll go ahead and, uh, open up the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant, who, who would that be? Is that, uh, Chris Daly or Chris Day rather, or someone else?
Correct, I am, uh, Chris Day from Day by Day Designs and I am, uh, in attendance with David and Lindsay. Homeowners at seventy-three Maple. Um, and yes, just as, uh, proposed, we're, we're looking to maintain the existing architecture of the house and. Extend the back portion, uh, without making. Too, too, too many adjustments to what's there already, we just want to, uh, keep the house as it is. And try to maintain that architecture.
Great. Any questions, uh, uh, any questions of the applicant?
No.
All right, anyone else here, thank you, anyone else to talk about, uh, 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 Chris? Or can I go ahead and ask for anybody that comments? Is there anyone else here to co- to comment on this item? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. David, it looks like you got your hands full there, uh, if I'm, if I'm looking at your picture. I, I was, I went, went to the site, one, once again, I'm glad that the house is being maintained rather than, uh, shut, uh, chopped down, so, uh. I, I don't see an issue with this one.
I don't even, happy to make the motion unless someone else wants to.
All right, Gabby, any comment?
Um, I, I agree.
Okay, good, then, uh, let's go ahead, uh, and make your motion then.
I move, and this is much, this can only be much easier than the first one because that thing was the most detailed motion I've ever seen. Move that the planning commission approve the special structure permit. At seventy-three Maple Avenue based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed. In the special structures permit certificate to allow in addition to a legal non-conforming main building to go beyond the main building area.
All right, second, move and seconded, uh, roll call please.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Neronsek?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Conse?
Yes.
All right, that's good, it passes, David, it's feeding time, I think, uh, we'll let you go ahead and get to work. All right, thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, I, I remember four D is structure, uh, special structures permit for four oh one Fletcher Drive in Atherton. Go ahead and do the same procedure, start with the staff overview.
Thank you, Chair Lane. Well, the property of four oh one Fletcher Drive is a fifty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-five square foot. Our one point three seven acre lot located in the R one A zoning district. And it's bounded by other low density, single family homes. So this is a corner lot, as you can see from the site plan here, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fletcher and Ridgeview Drives. Uh, the front property line is to the north along Ridgeview, now with a side setback off of Fletcher. The site contains an existing two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four square foot, single-story residence. The applicant is proposing to demolish that existing residence and construct a new nine thousand eight hundred ninety-three square foot, two-story residence. With a basement, poolhouse and pool. The proposed residence would exceed the maximum and sidewall height limits for the zoning district. Uh, which are thirty feet for the maximum and twenty-two feet for the sidewall height limit. The applicant's proposing a maximum overall height of thirty-one feet eight and a half inches and a sidewall height of twenty-two feet, six and a half inches. So exceeding the maximum and sidewall heights by one feet, eight and a half inches and six and a half inches respectively. Atherton Municipal Code Section seventeen point three two point zero four zero A provides that maximum and sidewall height limits for residences in the R one A district. May be exceeded, uh, up to thirty-four feet and twenty-eight feet respectively. With a corresponding increase in the setback distance of five feet for every one foot of height increase with the granting of a special structures permit. The applicant, uh, excuse me here, the front and side setbacks adjoining the portion of the building in excess of the height limits. Propose to have an increased setback, uh, of five feet up to the sidewall and eighteen feet eleven inches up to the maximum height. Now, the areas most impacted by the height increase are the front setback facing Ridgeview and the side setback facing Fletcher. In both cases, the setbacks have been increased in excess of what is required to accommodate the height increase per the Atherton Municipal Code. The rear setback for the residence exceeds the required rear setback by an additional eighty-two feet. Situating the residents well away from the neighboring property at four seventy-one Fletcher Drive. Now, here we get a, uh, cut out of the roof plan here with the blue shaded area indicating the portion of the overall height. Proposing to exceed the maximum thirty-foot height limit. And the orange shaded area indicating the portion proposing to exceed the maximum twenty-two foot sidewall height limit. This green line here indicates the increased setback by five feet to the sidewall. With the red line showing the increased setback by eighteen feet eleven inches to the maximum building height. The applicant's letter request, which is included as attachment two in the staff report, describes the location of the house as at the bottom of a valley. With Fletcher Drive and the boarding property situated at higher elevations. Now, this, the applicant argues, helps to diminish the impact of the height increase. And combined with existing screening from a stand of redwood trees adjacent to the other neighboring property at forty-one Ridgeview. An additional proposed screening as shown in attachment four with the staff report. Helps fulfill part A, uh, excuse me, helps fulfill requirement regarding impact to neighboring properties relative to privacy and view. Uh, as part of the required findings for granting the special structures permit. It falls that the proposal meets and exceeds the provisions of AMC chapter seventeen point through point three two. The town arborist has also reviewed the plans and determined that they would not impact any existing heritage trees. Uh, she has condition, this is included in the draft conditions of approval, that a robust landscape screening plan be included as part of the project. Uh, that a tentative plan is included as attachment four, but it will need to be formally reviewed and approved as part of the building permits and it'll process. Uh, the planning commission may also wish to add additional detail or considerations for that screening plan. Now, that current plan includes the planting of new thirty-six inch box Saratoga laurels, thirty-six inch box valley oaks and thirty-six inch box coast redwoods. It also includes relocating some olive trees on the property to improve the screening along the right of way. Now, to grant the special structures permit, planning commission must make the findings contained in Atherton Municipal Code Chapter seventeen point one five. They may grant the special structures permit if it makes, excuse me, if staff believes the applicant has demonstrated the ability to meet all three required findings. Staff believes it does specifically since. Pardon me, I think I slipped to the wrong page here.
All right.
My bad here. Let me just go back to my staff report, since I had a. Printing error. Okay, thank you. Uh, staff finds that the increased setback distances of the proposed building itself, combined with the existing proposed landscape screening in the topography of the site. Will assist to screen these areas of new construction from neighboring properties in the public right away. And thus will not substantially impact, uh, neighboring properties respective privacy and view. Staff also finds that the. Excess maximum and sidewall height limits, um, have been provided with sufficient increased setback of at least five feet for each one feet foot of building height. And all other development standards for the main residence are being met. And finally, staff also finds that the, excuse me, main residence complies with other associated development standards. And applicable life and safety code shall be applied and implemented through the future building permit process. So staff is recommending approval, but the planning commission may also amend or deny the, um. Special structures permit. Notice his application was mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. To date, the town has not received any additional public comment or inquiries, uh, beyond what was initially provided by the applicant. And I see them on the line here, so I will leave my time back to you, Chair Lane.
Very good, I've caught a couple of questions, anybody have some questions on this one, I've got a, a series of questions.
No.
Yeah, the only question I had is whether notices, I didn't hear notices or.
Or notices sent on this one?
Uh, yes, notices sent to properties within five hundred feet.
Very good, so the questions I have, uh, I have a lot of questions on this one, uh, 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 first of all, the, can you go back to the map for a minute? I have a question about the specifics on the, on the setback. Uh, is the entire blue box, uh, uh, not in the setback area or just the corner of that blue? The, where the red line is?
Yes, so, uh, apologies for that line not matching exactly, but essentially, so the blue area is all excess height. Um, by the time you get to that red line, the setback is, the additional setback is eighteen feet eleven inches. Um, which exceeds what is required in this case, uh, which would be an additional, I have it in my thing right here. Uh, yes, so for the maximum height, the minimum setback requirement to comply with the municipal code would be an additional. Eight feet, six and a half inches.
So it would be twenty-six inch, twenty-six feet and change.
I know, so, so normally the minimum required would be another, another eight feet, six and a half inches, so here the red line goes to eighteen feet, eleven inches. So by the time we get to any sort of portion in excess, we're well beyond our minimum required for the, uh, setback.
Right, then, what, so then, then I'm confused, what's the exception about then?
Oh, yes, so this, what's the exception about?
Yeah.
For the height increase?
Yeah, uh, so, so it's their setback far enough and all we have to do is prove that they're setback far enough and the height's okay, that's, that's what we're talking about.
So based on the municipal code, yes, it's essentially that the additional setback required is sufficient based on that five foot of setback for each one foot of height increase requirement. And second, that the other conditions of, for a special structures permit per seventeen point one five. So no negative impacts to neighboring properties respective privacy and view, that it complies with other development standards. And lastly, that's objective with, excuse me, consistent with the objectives of the general plan, uh, which staff found to be the case, but of course.
All right, and this is, the next area, the question I have is about the trees, the redwood trees that are in front of the current property. Uh, this is obviously going to be a taller building than the, than the single-family ranch style that's there. Uh, this, and this is where the, I'm always concerned that the, the overlap of what's going on with the, uh, assessment on the trees. Doesn't match the plan because I don't see, uh, any way for something to be built on this, on the, on the property that's. There now of the height we're talking about without impacting the red, the redwood trees up higher. Sally, did, have you looked at that at all?
And I can quickly add on that, so those were reviewed by, uh, Sally as part of the project, but Sally will add more on this, but because the trees are found to be in the main building area. Uh, they technically don't meet the definition for heritage trees.
So they're gonna go?
Um, well, the applicant did say that they're going to retain most of the redwoods, but, but. They're allowed to remove them if they're located in the main building area.
So that'll take, that'll take away part of the mitigation.
Yeah, but the applicant did say that they're gonna, and, and in the report, they said they would retain as many as possible. And that is why I didn't have any issues with this application, but the applicant can speak on that tonight.
All right, good, there, I will appreciate that because, yeah, I'll need a reason why we're doing this exception other than just architectural choice. All right, any other questions?
Not for me.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing, we'll hear from the applicant or the representative.
Um, hi, uh, Tom, do you want to answer the question about the?
Well, when you go, go ahead and say what you're going to say and then you can ask the questions at the end.
Well, introduce yourself too.
Yeah.
Okay, hi, I'm Ingrid, um, Kong, I'm here on behalf of the project manager for this project, um. And Nick Tan, the owner is here, as well as the principal of our firm, Reese Lombardo. And, um, I just wanted to, uh. Answer your question about some of the redwoods, um, we have, we had an, an existing tree protection plan. To begin with, and so while we're not required to have one, we'll be showing which trees will be protected.
Okay.
Sure, about three of them around the building.
And I'm Nick, I'm the property owner, I'm happy to chat through, you know, our thinking around.
And I'm Nick, I'm the property owner, and I'm happy to chat through, you know, our thinking around. Around the trees and around the structure.
Alright, good. What's your name again?
Uh, Nicholas Tan.
Nicholas Tan, okay, okay.
Um, so I think our goal is, you know, there is that line of redwoods, which we do love. And one of the concerns we had with buy initially buying the property was that there weren't enough mature trees on the property. Or at least not as much as we're used to. So we wanted to ensure that, you know, there'll be a way where. I know those trees, most of those trees are within the buildable zone, so they're not really subject to a lot of those restrictions. I think there are a couple that end up, might end up being too close to that house or they're already exist, they're already close enough to the existing house. The footprint of the house that we're going to be building at that corner should not exceed where. The existing houses because we're moving a bit of it further forward towards the street.
Alright.
Um, I think the goal is keep as many of the redwoods, I think we've identified too that we would probably remove due to the root system as well as. Um, Sally, you can correct me on this, but um, but the potential health of those trees. But um, and then I, and Tom Club can speak to this, uh, who's our landscape architect, but I think we were planning on obviously. Mitigating any issues with the removal of those trees and the removal of that screening. With reorienting the olive trees that are along the, along the street side currently. And potentially adding a couple of additional, um, you know, whatever mature trees we can find, redwoods likely. Into an area that's or into position which would. Cover the screening that was provided by those trees initially. But just a bit further away from the house. If that makes sense.
Alright. Alright, anything else?
Uh, Tom, do you have anything on top of that?
Yeah, Nick and Tom Club, the project landscape architect, Nick is, is correct. Uh, there are two redwood trees very close to the house that are in a compromised position and we worked with Sally regarding that. We're rearranging some of the existing olive trees and using those, they're, they're large, they're triple deep. On some edges of the property, so they're a perfect tree to move around and use as screening. So, and we're also adding uh, s- s- trees around the property for the future landscape plan. That would more than suffice in screening the house. That's all I have to say.
Alright. Uh, and the, any, any questions?
Not for me.
The only question I have is, uh, uh, what's driving the height of the, the design?
Um, I can speak to that. Um, it's, I don't know if you have um. An elevation view or anything.
I don't, that's a, that was, that's one of the things that was missing from the packet as far as I was concerned.
Yeah, I had the same question too. Uh, what's, um, how low is the value, that valley and what, what, um, um, justifies the height?
The valley is pretty low. I mean, it's definitely a valley, a low price. The, the concern I have is not so much about. Uh, the, the height of the bottom of the, of the valley, it's why the height increase other than just an architectural choice.
Okay, oh, I think the, when we measured it, it's um, well, it's about twenty and a half inches above. The height requirement, um, and that difference is because of any. In the survey, any sort of grade that couldn't be calculated, uh, they took a conservative. Um, measurement for the average natural grade, so um, because it's conservative. You know, a couple inches maybe higher than what's actually there. Um. And so, uh, that's one reason why it's measuring out to thirty-one and a half. Um, and then there's also a concealed mechanical well, as you can see in the roof plan, so that is uh, being concealed by. The roof, uh, because it's a corner lot, we don't want any equipment being exposed out into the street, so it's a nice cover for that. Um, and there's also multiple roofs in the style of home running into uh, the main roof.
Okay. Uh, that's what I, that, thank you. That was a very good explanation. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm less concerned after seeing the elevation than I was. Thinking it was going to be one of the new, more modern boxes that would press against the trees. Uh, okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
No.
No questions.
Not for me.
Alright, then I'm ready for a motion. You got ready for a motion? Ready to go on that one, Terry?
Sure.
Alright.
Uh, I moved that the planning commission approved the special structures permit. To allow for the maximum and vertical sidewall height of the main residence. To extend up to thirty-one feet, eight point five inches on the maximum height. And twenty-two feet, six and a half inches for the sidewall for portions of the home at four zero one Fletcher Drive. Based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structures permit certificate.
Very good, and I'll second it. Uh, and I'll let you know that I was not in favor of this before your presentation, so your presentation's made a difference.
Wow.
Uh, alright, so we'll, we'll go ahead. Any other comments?
Not for me.
Go ahead with the roll call, please.
Caroline.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronsick. Yes, Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Conce.
Yes.
Alright, next item uh, is item four E, the special structures permit at ninety-six uh, Laborum Road in Atherton. And we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Lane. The subject site in ninety-six Liburnum is a thirty-five thousand three hundred twenty-seven square foot. Flat corner lot, street frontages along ninety-six Liburnum Road and Catalpa Drive. Let me just pull up the side plan for you all here. Also here is see the side setback along Catalpa and then the frontage along Liburnum. The lot is primarily trapezoidal in shape with the rear property line and exterior side property line, line along Catalpa. England outwards to the northeast, creating a non-traditional rectangular shaped lot. The property is surrounded by other single-family residences and located in the RNA zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special structures permit to allow the construction of a new swimming pool. To encroach within required fifty-foot exterior side yard setback area for detached accessory structures. Now, the proposal is to locate the swimming pool within this required side yard up to twenty-four feet, six inches from the side property line. Butting Catalpa Drive and associated equipment at nineteen feet away from the property line along Catalpa Drive. Since this side property line abuts the public right away. Uh, the, it's the exterior side property line of which accessory buildings and structures must meet the minimum side yard setback for the main residence. Which in this case would be fifty feet. The applicants note that a cluster of five heritage oaks in one heritage redwood. Are located throughout the eastern and southeastern portions of the property. Uh, you can see the trees and the outlines of their TPZ zones outlined here. Uh, these severely limit the ability to locate a swimming pool on much of the rest of the property. Now, the minimum front yard setback for all types of accessory buildings and structures is either a hundred and twenty feet behind the front line or thirty feet behind the. Excuse me, a hundred and twenty feet behind the front property line or thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence. Uh, the municipal code additionally requires accessory structures to be located a minimum of eight feet from the main residence. The proposed pool meets and exceeds uh, the rear side, excuse me, the rear pain residence setback and front setback. The applicants have submitted an arborist report which provides a series of T per tree protection measures to be met throughout. Instruction, uh, the town arborist has reviewed, viewed the proposed plan, the project arborist report. And determine no heritage trees would be impacted as a result of the proposed swimming pool location. Uh, with specific conditions that a staff level tree protections on exception of eight X TPZ will be required. And that any associated hardscape with the swimming pool maintain a minimum eight X TPZ uh, for the nearby heritage trees. These are noted within the conditions of approval included as attachment one of the staff report. Atherton Municipal Code Section seventeen point four zero point zero five zero E. Allows swimming pools to have up to a ten-foot side yard setback with the issuance of a special structures permit. To grant that permit, the commission must make the findings contained in Chapter seventeen point one five. Uh, they may grant it, they find that the proposed pool will not negatively impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy and view. In this case, the pool will be screened by existing and proposed landscaping from adjacent properties and the public way. It's gonna be public right away. There's enough area between the proposed swimming pool and the public way. And adjacent properties for additional screening. And a six-foot tall fence along the exterior side property line will also contribute towards the screening. Second, that the project not negatively impact. That's, I mean, if the project complies with other development standards, restrictions or limitations. The pool will comply with other development standards, including for rear, front setbacks, um, as well as for landscape screening. And finally, the finding that the granting of the special structures permit is consistent with the objectives of general plan. So the pool complies with the zoning requirements, um. And is consistent with all other standards of the municipal code. So as indicated, staff believes the application demonstrates the ability to meet all three required findings for the special structures permit in order to issue approval. Uh, of course, the commission may amend or deny the request for the special structures permit. Today, uh, excuse me, notification was sent to all property owners within five hundred feet of the property. Today, planning department has not received any public comment regarding this proposal. The applicants noted they conducted their own outreach to the six surrounding neighbors. Uh, noted that there were no concerns from their neighbors regarding the application.
Alright, Ralph, were you sharing the map? Were you sharing the map? It didn't come through on my screen.
Oh, goodness.
Uh, just spinning there for a long time. It looked like it timed out.
Okay, let me pull that up again then, because maybe.
Make sure everybody who was on the line knows, knows what it looks like in case that.
Thank you. Try that again, man.
Yeah, it was just spinning like it was trying to get connected, but it wasn't connected. Is.
Is that any better for you?
It says it started screen sharing, but it's just spinning. So everybody got that on the line?
I have it, I have it, I mean, online I have it.
Yeah, I'm also able to view it.
Alright, good. Alright, that's all I cared about. I wasn't getting here. Alright, good, then uh, then we'll go ahead and then uh, any questions of staff?
No.
No.
Alright, I'll, alright, thanks, Cam. Yeah, alright, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant or their representative. Who does that be?
My name is Paul. Um, you wanna go first, Clay? Go ahead, go ahead, Clay.
Uh, hello, everyone. First of all, thanks for reviewing our request. I'm Clay Behor, the property owner with my wife Kelly.
Hello.
Hello.
That we, we have four young kids who love swimming and we absolutely love the trees on that property. And we're hoping to find a way to combine those two things in a way that preserves the beauty of the trees and gives them ample space. And uh, also lets our, our four little guys go swimming. And so that's the, the reason for our quest. I think in particular, we wanted to make sure that our neighbors on Catalpa, the closest to where this pool would be, were okay with this. And in fact, uh, we were able to reach all three, I think it was one eighty-four, one sixty-eight and one fifty-four along that row. Um, and confirmed that they didn't have any concerns. The other adjacent neighbors uh, weren't home but haven't issued any concerns. And I think just as uh, screening will be important to protecting the uh, Catalpa right away. You know, we also desire to have it be somewhat removed and private from that, so I, I think we can um, set it up well. Uh, Paul, I.
And I can just say, having grown up in Atherton, I grew up on sixty-nine Tuscaloosa and we have four children, uh, nine and under.
What do you do in your spare time?
Not a lot.
Yeah, uh, you know, the reason why we're here is we love where we live. We love the beautiful trees and the greenery and the privacy and the quiet. You know, we spent a considerable amount of the pandemic walking, you know, I would walk at nine months pregnant through Lindenwood. During the pandemic, there's no place that's more beautiful and more private. And we value that, we want to preserve that. You know, we also have four children who need to, you know, exercise in the pool. But I think our values are aligned here. We understand what the commission wants and we want that too. Uh, and we're really confident uh, in partnership with our team, with our neighbors, that we're gonna honor. I think the best of what everybody wants here, and so we're grateful for your time and we're happy to be here and answer any questions that you have about our project.
Great, thank you. And Paul, did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead and, go ahead.
Real, just real quick, yeah, my name's Paul Ip, I'm with Denly Hobart Gardens, the project landscape architect on this project. And just to reiterate what the favorites has said, um, yeah, the, the property has some beautiful heritage oaks and redwoods. And as you can see, it's very constrained on uh, basically the whole east, east side of the property and, and. Having the pool, trying to fit the pool in that area just did not work and to kind of, you know, to keep, to keep the, um. Keep the, um, the health of the trees, so this is kind of hoping we can, um, um. Have this pool along within the setback.
Alright, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
No, no.
Does the clubhouse make the cut? Does it, does it stay on or not? There's a, there's a clubhouse in the driveway. It looks like a clubhouse. Is that, is that going away?
The, the, there's a small pre-existing kind of accessory structure, is that what?
Yeah, yeah. That, is that going?
I, 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 I think TBD with David, our architect, who's, who's still here. I, 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 I think that was maybe a, a plan B in case we needed to kind of shoehorn a, a pool in over there.
Okay.
But I, I, I can't confirm that.
Alright, well, that, that, I just, when I was at the side, I just, I, that stuff was interesting. Uh, 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 structure.
Bonus structure.
Yeah, that's, that exists right now with the house. Um, but you know, I think Clay and my vision for our children is really like. Running in our yard, swimming in the pool, not infringing on anybody's privacy or noise. We just really want to respect the beautiful lush greenery that is, you know, Lindenwood and what we really fell in love with, with the lot.
Alright, alright, thank you very much. Any other questions? So bring it back to the commission for discussion as action is appropriate.
Yep.
Ready for a motion on this one? Good, alright, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I'll do it. I move that the planning commission approve the special structures permit at ninety-six. Liburnum Road, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structure permit. To allow a detached accessory structure swimming pool to have a reduced side yard setback for the reasons enumerated in the staff report. And the conditions stated in the special structures permit.
Alright, good. I'll second it. Yeah, alright.
Go ahead.
Yep. Alright, so I'll second it. We'll wait for a second. Alright, uh, kind of, any, any comments?
Actually, I just have one comment, so the, the, the applicant too, go ahead, four girls. Do you have four boys? Is that what I'm hearing?
We have a, we've, we know the Tuckers. We have three sons and one pandemic daughter.
Oh, there we go. Okay, we almost went a four and a four, okay.
There are some math making potentials in there.
Curious if we went four and four, that would be a first this, in nine, thirty-seven years on the planning commission, so yeah.
Alright, very good. Alright, uh, roll call, roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronsick. Yes, Commissioner Lamb?
Yeah.
Commissioner Conce.
Yes.
There you go.
Alright, very good.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Good luck on your project.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
With the clan, too. Bye-bye. Alright, item four F is a special structures permit at one seventy-five Isabella Avenue. Uh, we can go ahead with a staff overview and we'll ready, ready to go.
Thank you, Chair Lane. The property at one seventy-five Isabella is a forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-seven square foot or one point one five acre. Wag lot located in the RNA zoning district. It's bounded on three sides by low-density single-family homes and the Menlo Circus Club on its southwest boundary. The site contains an existing three thousand forty-nine square foot, single-family residence and detached carport. Now, in the future, the applicant intends to redevelop the entire property. Uh, with a new two-story residence, detached garage and accessory dwelling unit. Uh, this evening, however, we are here, so the applicant is applying for a new nine hundred and forty-nine square foot detached outdoor. Pavilion dining area with a proposed reduced front yard setback of sixty feet. Now, in the graphic here, we can see the proposed location of the outdoor pavilion. So the normal required front yard setback for accessory buildings and structures.
The old picture up.
Oh, no, this is our, uh, one seven five Isabella, is it a little?
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good. Alright, I thought it was the old, alright, great.
Yeah, they all blend together when you get to the.
Alright, good. I thought, I saw the triangle, sorry.
So the normally required front yard setback for dete, excuse me, for detached accessory buildings and structures. Is either a hundred and twenty feet from the front property line or thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence. Uh, we could see in the graphic here, the blue line, which would be the normally required standard accessory setback, thirty feet behind the front line. Um, the purple line showing the proposed front setback of sixty feet or right at the same front setback as the main residence. Now, the front property line runs adjacent to the property owned by the Menlo Circus Club. Uh, so the pavilion would be sixty feet setback from that circus club. And the impact of the SSP would be locate the pavilion thirty feet closer to this neighboring property that would otherwise be allowed. Pavilion otherwise meets the ten-foot required side setback from the other adjacent property at one seventy-five Britain. Both adjacent properties to Circus Club and one seventy-five Britain. Both adjacent properties, the circus club and one seventy-five Britain, have provided letters of support, which were included as attachments four and five in the staff report. Now, as a condition of approval, the applicant is required to submit a landscape screening plan. Per the current plan, the applicant proposes to plant bay laurels and African fern pines along the portions of the property line along the, the, adjacent to the length of the pavilion. The commission may wish to provide comments or additional conditions for the applicant for this uh, screening plan. The arbors has reviewed the location of the trees on site and determined there will be no impacts from the location of this pavilion. No TBD exceptions or tree removals are requested to accommodate the proposed building. Atherton Municipal Code Section seventeen point four zero point zero three zero allows detached accessory buildings and structures located on flag lots to have the same front yard setback as the main residence with the issuance of a special structures permit. To grant the permit, the commission must make the findings contained in chapter seventeen point one five. And may grant it if all three findings are met. First, that there will be no negative impact to neighboring properties in respect to privacy and view. Second, that the building or structuring, structure complies with other development standards. And finally, that the granting of the permit is consistent with the objectives of the general plan in this title. Staff believes the application has demonstrated the ability to meet all three required findings to issue approval. Specifically, the proposed pavilion will not impact heritage trees and meets all other required setbacks and development standards and will be screened from neighboring properties in the public right of way by the proposed screening plan. The planning commission may also amend or deny the request for the special structures permit. Notice of this application was mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. To date, uh, no additional public comment has been received other than what was provided by the applicant at the time of their submission. Um, I believe I see Emily and some other members of the applicant team on the line, and I will give my team time back to you, Chair Lane.
All right, any questions of staff?
No.
All right, very good, then we'll go ahead and open up the public uh, comment and start with the applicant or the representative, who would that be, Randy, is that you or who would, who's up on this one?
I think Emily is the property owner.
Yes, Emily's the property owner, hi.
Hi.
Hi, Emily.
Yeah, Emily and Lance are the property owners.
Okay.
And I work with the architect. So first, I wanted to say that, um, thank you so much to planning staff to help us put together the package, especially Ralph. Um, really helpful to just talk us through the entire process. Um, I think planning did a great job, uh, sort of putting together the package, it's pretty clear that there is no privacy impact either to the property just to the south or to the circus club, it's almost like the alleyway to the back of the circus club and there's really no privacy impacts there. Uh, the only thing I did want to say is the screening plan is a bunch of, um, I, I think one of the tree names was wrong, I'm not sure it matters, but uh, it was a, a bunch of uh, bush form, uh, shrub form portocarpus trees and bay laurels as part of the screening plan, uh, we're intending for this project. Um, I don't know if Emily and Lance want to add something?
Hi, everyone, it's late, so we won't belabor this, um, like, thanks again to the, the planning department, this is a pretty funky lot, it's a flag lot.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, just for the record.
I'm, I'm Lance, and this is my wife Emily, we're the owners of one seventy-five Isabella. Um, and as I was saying, it's um, this is a, a sort of a funky lot, um, there was a lot of discussion with the planning department about what the, the front of the lot was actually determined, uh, and so there was, there was a great working relationship to figure out how to position the design we wanted to have, um, and as you guys know, the, the big thing is reaching out to the neighbors, so we spent a lot of time in the circus club and, and the new owners of one seventy-five Britain, and everyone's comfortable that, um, this is a fairly minor exception, it's not going to affect anyone, um, and we've obviously uh, offered to, to work very closely with both neighbors on any, any type of concerns around screening and privacy.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions, any questions, no questions, all right, uh, anyone else here to speak on this item? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for the, uh, for the discussion or action, uh, uh, as appropriate with the commission.
I don't, I don't have any questions.
I don't either, I don't either, I, I went to the site, but I can tell you, I got a really good view of the flat, of the, of the pole, but not the flag. Uh, it's a, it's a long drive, so.
You'll have to come by some other time.
All right, but I, I saw no, that, uh, it'll be very difficult to have any impact except if you're flying over with a helicopter. Uh, and, a, any other comments from, from commission? All right, ready for a motion?
Fine.
All right, I'll move the, the planning commission approved the special structures permit to allow a detached accessory building, a pavilion, uh, to have the same front yard setbacks to the main residence at one seventy-five Isabella, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structures permit certificate. I need a second, second, uh, Gabby, a second. You gotta, we gotta get you on the marquee today, Gabby. All right, very, very, very good, uh, you got a second, so let's get a roll call going.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronsec.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lam.
Commissioner Lam? You still on?
I'm muted.
I'm, I was sorry, somehow I was muted, uh, yes.
All right.
Uh, Commissioner Conce.
Yeah.
All right, very good, have fun.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you for waiting also, thank you for waiting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, bye-bye.
Yep.
As, uh, item number five of staff reports, uh, you, uh, is, uh, is Lisa still on to have an update for what happened at the meeting before?
Yeah, I'd love to know.
Yeah.
Certainly, first, I want to thank Ralph for doing such an amazing job with so many items this evening.
Yes, absolutely, yay.
Absolutely.
And, and the commission, the commission for your very, very efficient review, so thank you. Um, so, based on, let's say, we reviewed the, the draft housing element with the planning commission and then we, um, released it for public review and comment. We received over three hundred public comments, a lot expressing concern with the overlay concept, the multifamily concept. So at the, um, city council's meeting last week on July twentieth, they directed staff to make a lot of changes to the draft housing element and one is to remove that overlay concept. Um, the other is to really try to bolster up the, um, accessory dwelling unit provisions and then to remove some of the, um, new additions to the PFS zone for the public facilities and schools. Um, there was some suggestions about, um, reduced setbacks, some height increase, to really try to encourage the schools to develop the housing this go-around. Um, and based on a lot of concern, those were pulled back. Um, so we made those edits, provided it to the city council for their meeting this afternoon and they made some additional changes, um, I wouldn't say anything really as substantial as the previous meeting, but they did authorize us to transmit it to HCD. So staff will be making those final edits and then we'll be transmitting it to, um, HCD, the state reviewer. They have ninety days to provide us written comments and what we've learned from another jurisdiction is about that sixtieth day of that ninety-day period, they give you a call and they provide you written comments, excuse me, verbal comments. So we were told to have a pen and paper ready and write notes as quickly as you can, um, and then you'll get the written comments thirty days later. I will make sure that we send the commission, um, that revised version that was, um, authorized by the council this afternoon, um, when we transmit it to HCD. Any questions?
Have the council seen the, the, uh, San Mateo County assessment, uh, also, like, like we were given?
Um, which assessment, I'm sorry?
That was the one that, uh, highlighted, you know, that their, their perception of the percentage that we estimated on on ADUs and whether or not we were going to be able to actually get all that, all that letter.
Right, yeah, so the council's received all those comments as well, um, we didn't really have any housing advocates speak at the meeting, but there was a few letters and so they did receive all that documentation, yes.
All right, and, and was the final plan that submitted going to address any of those points or not?
Um, we'll address a few of them, but not the major items.
Yeah, I was, I thought that would be the case, okay. All right, so, uh, and, uh, you're still going to be on the case for a while, is that correct?
That's the agreement I reached with the city manager.
All right, good, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to get our money's worth out of you.
Yeah, so the council did, on their July twentieth meeting, approved a one-year contract with, um, M Group for current planning services. Um, Ralph, Steffi and I will be working with them on the transition for as long as that takes. So you'll, I'll expect you to see them at your next meeting, the new staff.
Good, it's good to hear.
All right, well, it's, it's not good to hear that you're going, but it's good to hear that.
That's helping out the transition part, I'm assuming, yeah.
All right. All right, so we'll see you on that one subject only, or it may not come back to us, right, it might all be with the council from here on out, right?
No, it's required to go back to the, um, planning commission prior to adoption of the housing element, you'll be the recommending body. Um, and so I'll see it through as, as long as George wants me to see it through, essentially.
All right, very good, then Ralph is, Ralph is going in the next meeting, he won't be here?
Um, that depends on our transition with the new firm, so we'll work that out, to be determined.
All right.
I have a, just a quick question, um, regarding, um, the, the layover issue, so, um, so with all the objections from the neighbors and so forth and the residents, uh, so what's the final determination that there can be town, townhouse, um, zoning or I know some of the other, like you said, the jurisdictions had different opinions on that. Um, and how many units are we approving with, um, you know, being submitted in our city plan?
Yeah, so the city council directed staff to remove all references to the townhome zoning, all reference to the overlay, so that's removed at this time. Um, what I understand though is they may be interested in coming forward in September with another community outreach opportunity to talk about in anticipation of HCD comments. What else do we want to do to try to achieve more housing diversity in the community?
Yeah, I, I think the other aspect, and actually, that's, that's a very, um, very good plan. Um, because, um, it turns out, from what I understood from the last meeting, uh, it was that the town, townhouses in certain jurisdictions are actually used as low-income apartments. So, um, they're, they're not really actual like townhome purchases and so forth, so that makes sense, um, may have one developer develop, develop townhomes and, you know, they, they may not even pay their taxes, you know, who knows? Um, and then the other issue is, um, so, okay, so we'll have some time for more community outreach on that.
That's correct.
Right, that, that makes sense.
All right.
That's all the, all I have for an update, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, yeah, and they, the time management is pretty good considering what I thought it was going to be, they were just a little bit over. All right, commissions report, anything there? I don't have anything this time, except, uh, Ralph, thank you again, if you, we don't see you again, uh, we really appreciate the hard work you've done and and an excellent job, thank you very much.
I think I appreciate it.
Lisa too.
Absolutely.
We're going to see Lisa, I'm not going to say, good, good job, Lisa, she's going to be back. All right.
Unbelievable.
Hopefully you'll be here next meeting.
Yes, and I'm, I'm, I'm on the road, so, you know, maybe come for fun.
All right, very good. All right.
Move to Drew.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dies for lack of a second.
Second.
Roll call please. Randy, a second on that one, all right.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ronsec.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam.
Yes.
Commissioner Conce.
Yes.
All right, all the fun's over for tonight, and we'll see you next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good, have a good.
Thank you so much.
August, I guess, see you then.
Yeah.
We're off.
All right, take care, thank you so much, bye-bye.
Bye-bye, no, not, 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 August, we're off in November.